We'll bring to order the City of Cotwood Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting, Monday, February 24, 2020. First order of business, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
President.
Commissioner Dowell?
Here.
Commissioner Mastin?
President.
Commissioner Norwood?
Here.
Commissioner Sherman?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dowling?
Here.
Chairman Williams?
Here. Next item of business, approval of the minutes for our January 27, 2020, regular meeting. Do I hear any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So confirmed. There's some people coming in, okay. At this time, we have the call to the public. If anybody would like to address the commission on any item that's not on the agenda, this is the time to come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to all of business.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Number two, informational reports and updates.
Oh, I skipped right over that. Boy, all right, you want to do that up front, that sounds good.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, commission, I am pleased to introduce our new planner, Mr. Gary Davis. Comes to us from recently working in Prescott Valley with many, many years' experience behind him, so we're excited that he's with us and expecting him to do great things.
Good. Gary, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Good, we look forward to working with you. All right.
That's all I had.
All right, new business. First order, the first item is DR 19-003, the extension of the Cotwood Christian Assembly building on 750 East Mingus Avenue. James?
Commissioner, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be stepping down because the company I work for did do some work on it.
Yes.
Totally portioned it.
All right. You're so excused. Don't trip.
Thank you, Chairman Williams, members of the commission. As you said, this is an extension for a previously approved design review project for the Cotwood Christian Assembly. About a year ago, they got their approval for design review for their 16,400-square-foot building located at the corner of Mingus Avenue and 7th Street, just basically across the street from where the post office is located. The subject site is zoned R3 and presently does have the existing church facility. The new project would basically be done in two phases. Forgive me if I'm repeating some of this for some of the older members that are more senior members will have newer members, this will be for you also. I don't know if even that second one came out right. They'll be doing the project in two phases. One will be the first one, the main church facility itself, and then the second phase will be ball fields and some of the accessory uses on the site. Presently, the access to the site is 7th Street, which is a private street, and then two accesses onto Mingus Avenue. The main part of the reason that they're back here is changes to the building codes that were adopted to the city, required modifications to the engineering required for the building that they're going to be, it is a metal building that they'll be bringing in, so that just created some delays. The church is still moving forward with the project, and nothing has changed in that regard. This is an aerial rendition of what would be seen presently, the existing facility is in here, the new location would be this larger building here, and then the ball fields and additional parking areas. This is the rendering that was presented a year ago, and a site plan showing what the project would be. The rest of these are some photographs, but I do want to point out also, and one of the stipulations in here is that, the stipulation was given for the church to come back with the landscape plan, they're going to be utilizing, they're requesting to utilize additional landscaping as opposed to solid fencing in the areas that are adjacent to some residential areas. That is permissible in our code for them to do that, but it does require the commissions granting that approval. So you will be seeing that landscape plan come back to you at a future date. So some of these are some existing pictures of what presently is there. And this is the adjacent apartment complex to the east, also looking sort of to the northeast, some residential units back there. And the post office is located on the west side. This would be looking east on Mingus and looking west on Mingus. These are the, another apartment complex across Mingus, and the site where most of the construction activity would take place. So that concludes what I have, it's, you know, a time extension, we are requesting one year additional time for them to obtain their building permits and begin construction. The applicant is here this evening, should you have any questions that you would like to ask?
The delay is, what, engineering, or?
Right, it's mostly engineering for the building itself, and since they got their approval a year ago, we did adopt new building codes that required them to have additional and new engineering done for the building.
Okay. Before you go, Commissioner Hart, do you have any questions?
No.
No?
No.
No questions? All right, now, the applicant?
Jim Lawler is here this evening, if you have any questions for him.
Right. Your name, please, sir.
My name is Jim Lawler, and I own Lawler Construction Incorporated here in Cotwood, and I also am a member of, it's Journey Church now is the new name, not church, yes.
Okay, and basically, you get this engineering done and be ready to go, it just looks like...
Our target date is to start before the end of the year.
Okay.
So we should have building permit in hand and a landscape plan to you before then, so that you can approve that, yes.
Okay. Basically, there's no other changes in the plans that we approved?
No.
As far as our design review goes?
That's correct. Now, it just, as Jim mentioned, the phasing is the main sanctuary, the 16,000-square-foot building will be built first, and then there will be a remodel of the older building, the older sanctuary, the current sanctuary, will be a remodel of that in the next phase, along with hopefully the ball fields and then any improvements around that. We do have a space for a food pantry in the back, but that's phase three, so.
Right, okay. Mr. Hart, any questions, and Mr. Lawler?
Can I ask any questions outside of the extension?
Yes.
When I was looking at the, what's labeled the northwest elevation, I was noticing that you've got really quite a bit of flat wall on either side of the entry, and I was just wondering is, just, that, you're presenting yourself to the community there, and thought you might want to soften it up, and what I was thinking is maybe if you could continue a wainscote to the left and right of the entry, just to soften up the elevation, would that be something you would consider?
I just pushed that back, right? Oops, if you want to go back to the, oh, right? Okay, so you're talking about that wall right there?
No, 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 the one facing the street, along in there, yeah.
Now, actually, we have, we have a facade that's designed on the front of that, so let me see if I...
Do you have those elevations on here? I'm looking at elevation number one. I believe it's mislabeled.
It could be. We, actually, Jim pointed out to me that the elevations were mislabeled.
Yeah.
So I apologize for that.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, that kind of stuff happens.
There is, there is a roof, well, a structure element that's, has some...
You've got stone on the entry, and you've got stone over on the right side, and it just seemed like it would kind of soften it up a bit and give you a better presentation to the community if you continued a wainscote along.
Yeah, so, those are, they're small, but they're... They're on us? Do I go? To the right? To the right? I'm just learning this, so I, this is, okay, so this, so this is the front of the building. Both these sides are the front of the building. And this is actually the left side, as it's turned, so this is the rear that faces the basketball court?
That's correct, yes.
And then this part is where the amphitheater will be, and there'll be a stage?
Yes.
Side stage there, on that side?
Mm-hmm.
And so these are those elements there that, architectural elements, that kind of give you a different look than just looking at a straight wall.
Well, I thought the idea of the screens up above, that really helped quite a bit. That was a nice touch.
Thank you.
But I was looking at it, and I was just going, you know, just right along the base underneath where the shade...
You're talking about that, right?
Yeah, right along in there.
So you're thinking maybe some wainscote stone there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably something we could do, and I'll...
I think it'll just give you a better presentation to the community.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Hart? Mr. Hart, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Dowell? Yes?
Can I prep him? I'm gonna just have something for the landscape plan when it happens, and I just want to give him my heads up. I was gonna suggest looking at the photos that we saw, that, for your landscaping plan, especially the area in between the church property and the apartments where the apartments back up, that that primarily be evergreen. Right now, you can see there are some trees there, and it effectively provides no barrier, so I just wanted, I mean, you may have already thought of this, but just going into it, it will really behoove you to put in evergreen growth there.
Right, I think those are, I'm trying to think of the tree that grows wild around here.
Oh, yeah.
The Tree of Paradise? Yes.
Yes.
Which, I don't know why that's got that name, because it's not very...
It's the real nuisance.
Not very paradise.
I've had one of those in my yard, they're not fun.
It's a weed.
Yeah.
So, yes, those will be removed, and we will plant evergreens, that's, yes, thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
I don't have any questions.
No questions.
No, Jim, I think that pretty well covers it.
Thank you.
We appreciate you covering the...
All right.
All right, anybody in the public would like to address this item? Not seeing anybody, I'm gonna close the floor to the public. Mr. Hart, your comments, sir?
I think I've already made mine.
All right, yeah, what about the extension? Do you have any problem with the extension?
I have no problem with the extension.
I have no problem with the extension, sir.
I approve the extension.
No problem with the extension.
No problem either.
I don't either. Commissioner Norwood, would you please help us out here and make the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that DR 19-003, Cotwood Christian Assembly, application for extension, be approved with the following stipulations: that the project is developed in conformance with the development plan submitted for the February 25, 2019 meeting, and as may be further modified by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number two, that the project conforms to Code Review Board comments stated October 24, 2017. Number three, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of design review conditions shall be issued prior to the certificate of occupancy. Number four, the location of the ball field areas may be no closer than 10 feet to the adjacent properties to allow for landscape areas to be provided for screening. Number five, submit a detailed landscape plan to be reviewed and approved by the planning department to address the use of landscaping and existing vegetation to achieve the required screening from adjacent residential properties and street perimeter landscaping. Number six, the landscaped area along Mingus Avenue shall be completed with phase one of the development. Number seven, building permits shall be applied for by 12 months from the date of approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number eight, any other stipulations which the Planning and Zoning Commission has, which I don't think were, one, I would like them to just take into consideration what Mr. Hart has brought up.
I have a question with regard to number five, that says, the detailed landscape to be reviewed and approved by planning department, don't we need to come back for us, particularly with the landscape?
Yes, it should be planning commission.
Planning commission, okay with you, Mr. Norwood, number five?
Number five, then we revise that to submit a detailed landscape plan to be reviewed and approved by the planning commission to address the use of landscaping and existing vegetation to achieve the required screening from adjacent residential properties and street perimeter landscaping.
Very good, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Hart seconds Commissioner Norwood's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastin?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Onto our next item of business, which is DR 20-001, Eric Mini Storage at 25 East Cotwood Street for design review approval.
Next to the farm, the farm that used to be.
Okay, so, Commissioner Hart, you recusing yourself?
Yes, he is.
All right, very fine.
Is he? Okay, Chairman Williams, members of the commission, this is design review 20-001 for a mini storage facility located at 25 East Cotwood Street. Closest intersection is Willard and Cotwood Street, it's on the south side of Cotwood Street. Zoning is I-2, which is heavy industrial, and mini storage is a permitted use in that zoning district. The overall project would consist of 37,500 square feet approximately of storage units. There would be nine separate buildings, and those buildings are proposed to be done in three phases. Access to the site would be from Cotwood Street. The adjacent property to the east is zoned residential. Because of that, and this development, a couple of requirements are being placed on this facility. One is that a solid six-foot concrete masonry wall would be constructed along the entire length of this development adjacent to that residential, residential zone property. In addition to the solid fence, there is a 10-foot landscape requirement, so within that 10-foot, or within that solid wall, there would be a 10-foot landscape area adjacent to the residential use. The way they position the buildings, and you'll see that in a minute, is as far away as it can be from the residential uses. There is a stipulation in here that the entire length of the, even though the project is being done in phases, that the wall be constructed with the first phase of development. There are 19, based on the warehouse use, there are 19 parking spaces required, and there are 19 spaces dispersed throughout the overall site. So as you can see on the site plan, the nine separate buildings, the residential use is over here on this side, so there would be a solid six-foot wall along the entire length of this property line, and then within that, there would be a 10-foot continuous strip. It would not have this little area where it narrows down, that would be 10 feet along the entire length of the adjacent residential use. Here's a rendering, as you would see from the front, with the landscaping superimposed on that, you can see the wall and the landscaping on the east side of the property there. Here's our landscape plan showing the landscaping both along Cotwood Street and then adjacent to the residential. As I mentioned, it does, on this site plan, it sort of narrowed down a little bit, but there is, that requirement of the 10-foot landscaping is that this be continuous 10-foot width along the entire property. And the applicant is aware of that stipulation that is in here. So here's some photographs of the site, as you would be standing on Cotwood Street and looking to the south, the site is here, there is a little wash that runs through it, so that will be channeled underneath the, underneath the site. You can sort of see that on the landscape plan here where that drainage exists would actually be funneled underneath. Property to the north, a dog kennel, sort of dark here, but this is looking at the, from the front portion of the property adjacent to Cotwood Street, and those are the residential units to the east, and that's where the six-foot wall and 10-foot landscaping would be located adjacent to those properties. It's looking to the east on Cotwood Street, and to the west on Cotwood Street. And that's all I have for my presentation, I'm available for any questions, and we also have the applicant here this evening and his engineer, for questions you have.
Question, Jim?
Jim, can we go back to the six-foot wall and the landscape? There we go. So it's gonna be a six-foot wall against the residential area? Correct? And then you have your landscape, your 10-foot landscape, is there anything in between the landscape and then the rest of the property, or is it landscape and then it opens up to the rest of the property?
The wall would be at the property line, the landscape would be within this property, the 10 feet, and then you would have, you know, the drive aisle.
Okay, so there's no, like, other three-foot fence, two-foot fence, nothing like that, just goes from landscape into the, into the area?
Correct, are you saying along this side of the landscape?
Yeah.
Area? I don't believe there's any fencing proposed there, because that would be seen from the drive aisle.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Internal.
Internally, there was an extra wall in there?
Right.
Okay. And the sidewalk goes the entire length of the property down Cotwood Street?
Yes, it does.
And it'll be matched into the other property sidewalk?
That's correct, and there are engineering standards that were given to them through the Code Review Project that requires the curb gutter and sidewalk, it specifically gave them a driveway design, and there is no rolled curb that would be permitted in that location to tie into other properties. Okay. I don't have any questions, sir?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions for me.
Any questions of Jim?
Yeah, I do have a question. Jim, what's the length of the wall gonna be on that, on the property line? I couldn't really see that here, I'm...
Maybe 400, about 500 feet.
Yeah.
490.
That's what I thought, yeah. That's on here, but it seems, is there gonna be anything visual to kind of break up the monotony of a 500, 600-foot wall that faces the residential area? Or is that just gonna be straight concrete block? Was there any provisions for...
The code requires a solid masonry wall, it doesn't stipulate design features. I guess that would be something you could discuss with the applicant, or stipulate something accordingly.
Right, okay.
But in, within the code, it doesn't get into the design.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, anything with Jim?
No questions.
Okay.
Can I go back?
Yes, sir.
Actually, I'll talk to the applicant about it, okay?
All right. And the applicant is here, sir?
Okay. Luke Sefton, who is the engineer for the applicant.
Your name for the record, sir?
Good evening, Commissioner, Commission. My name's Luke Sefton, I'm with Sefton Engineering. I'm here today with Gail Herrick, who's the owner, and he's available for any questions of the commission. Thank you for seeing us this evening. The first question was along the fence, along the landscaping, there is no, I mean, we have the main CMU wall there, but, yeah, it's just an edge of pavement, we actually have drainage, which one is, I just put it off. Anyway, we have, right along that edge, it's actually going into our detention basin, the landscaping is also acting as our detention area, and then the, what spot is it? So, right along here, it's just an edge of pavement, and it'll go into our landscape area for drainage and detention. This sidewalk along Cotwood Street, Cotwood Street goes from a residential street mostly down here to industrial, and so what we did was we're having a change of width from use, and so I aligned the sidewalk up with the sidewalk that's basically way down here, so that there's an even transition as you go through, so it lines up with the, and the rest of the industrial area. One of the early discussions that we had with staff was this fence along here, and Jesse and I did this subdivision a few years ago, so this is Jesse's fault, not mine. No. Actually, it was fun, so we, but what's happened... So we, we, but what's happened here is there's about a, there's a little gap in there that, they got a chain link fence for the back of these properties and it's up quite a bit. It's about six, seven feet up in the air, higher than this, than this development here. And one of the ideas was to go through and just redo this and take down the wall and do that, but the problem was, was that this is a little bit of a no man's land in here. One, it's about six foot, seven foot above us. And then they have a six-foot high chain link fence with slats in there above that. And they're going to have a little gap in there. And there's not, nothing that we can do about that from our standpoint. It's not our property. But we, we thought about combining, combining the fences, but there's too many issues of having to go through to do that. But yeah, this, this property is well below that, so they'll actually be looking over the top of it. They have a six-foot fence on their property with slats in it. It needs to be straightened out. It's pretty crook. I mean, it's, it leans back and forth, wobbles. So, but anyways, that's kind of heard a couple of your questions. If I'm here for any other questions that you might have that I can straighten out.
Mr. Dow, any questions, Amber?
So with that said, the no man's land, how much space is there between the no man's land now, between that?
Probably about six to 10 feet.
So there's six to 10 feet between their fence and your six-foot solid wall?
Yeah.
How much of that property is theirs and how much of that property is yours?
All that's theirs.
All that's theirs.
We'll put the fence, our fence right on the property line.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I only have the concern of that becoming an area that is used for...
Illicit.
No. Nobody...
Trying to find a good, what is it? You know, for other than what it's intended to use for, which is not...
The difficult, the, the other part of that is that when we get right down here, their fence now, there's a fence along the property line here. In fact, there's a shed or basically a garage that's right up against the property right in here. So there's literally no way for people to sneak in. I mean, they might come back in the back part of the property, but you got the homeowners all along there. I mean, they have porches there. I, I don't think you're going to get anybody going in there that's not going to be noticed by the neighbors real quick.
They don't have access from the street.
There's no access to this from the street. They would either have to come through, well, we're going to have a block wall there, or they're going to have to go through somebody's yard here and jump a six-foot fence.
Okay. And so that brings me to my next question. It's a six-foot wall with nothing else on top, meaning that there's no other barrier on top of the six-foot wall?
There's no barrier, no. It's a masonry wall.
Is there a wall on the west side?
Yes.
Is it also a six-foot fence?
Yes. We were required to put a barrier, barriers around the whole property. So just to give you, all the way along this side is the masonry. Along the back is a chain link that we go up the side of the hill here. And then we come through here, actually, we moved this building over because by the time we get down here, we're about six feet below this property here. So we decided to move this over and put the fence here. We have a six-foot fence here. It almost goes, there's a fence over the top of this building because we're about half and half, but to keep a barrier from this side. So all the way along there, in fact, on one of the drawings, I think we show, do we have all the engineering drawings up there or, or you got them here?
We have.
I did a, I did a couple profiles just because of the questions of the fence when we were looking at them.
Well, let me give you my, let me give you my concerns, so it might help cut to the chase. So here's my concern. It's a six-foot wall. I'm almost 50 years old, I can get over a six-foot wall. It's, it's a storage facility, which you guys obviously pride yourself in having security, right? Or some type of penetration. So my concern is, the wall is only six foot tall, I can get over the six-foot wall. If we build this with a six-foot wall that probably half of us can get over, and we find now there's a problem.
Yeah.
What do we do to rectify that problem in the future? Because now we have a residential place there and now they might end up with Constantine wire or whatever else it is to keep people out who don't want to be there. So their concern being is if we made another foot taller, if we made it a seven-foot wall, that takes some of that people getting over the top of it. Do you understand?
Yeah, I don't think we do that.
Can we go seven foot?
Yes, if the commission approves it, you can do that as part of this. You can make it go to seven feet.
Because I, I know that adds to the cost, but I have that concern, but because it's a six-foot wall, at what point do we end up, are we, you know, trading security for that?
No.
If, if you understand my point. Again, and that's really my own concern, is people getting in and out and us, and after we approve it, two years down the road, now we've got to keep people out and we end up with...
Razor wire.
A makeshift razor wire and now we're next to the residential area where I'm sure the residents don't probably want to see razor wire. So that's my concern.
I mean, they usually do a couple strains of barbed wire at the top. I, we hadn't thought about, I know with the applicant, Gail and I, I mean, Gail's concern was security all along. That's why we did the details of the fence, was to look at, even, you know, our concerns were all on the one side of, because we were down, somebody could, from the other lot, just basically jump a three-foot high fence and get over. So we wanted to make sure we had enough height there. And yeah, we do have security lights in there and there will, and, and luckily with modern technology, we can have a lot more security. But we, we hadn't talked about, you know, that much barbed wire or doing anything with that on top.
Well, and again, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't think you really need barbed wire, but you're going to get, have to give a perimeter fence that's taller than the average person can get over. I mean, I'm not in the greatest shape and I can do this with a wall, so just, just a thought.
I got over a few fences.
So last question is, are there security cameras in here?
There's going to be at least at the front.
Are there going to be interior?
Extensive security system.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions.
My questions are more about the front. So we have the street, and when I say front, I mean the Cottonwood Street. Your elevation that you've given us, the wall, with the exception of the signage that says Herrick Storage, is completely flat. I would like to see some, I mean, it's not, it's not the super long wall, but it would be nice as that area gets increasingly built up. I've lived in a lot of areas where, that were industrial and then slowly become increasingly residential as things kind of move around. It'd be nice if that wasn't a flat wall, like if you added, I don't want to be prescriptive, but like some texture, like some facade, a wainscoting, like something, just something to break up the length. I mean, I was thinking, what I would do is like a, sort of a fake pop-out column kind of an effect that you can get if you just put like a little, a change in the facade in the forms, in the concrete forms. I don't know if you're pouring, if you're going to do, do you do CMU?
It's a metal building.
Okay.
It's going to be pre, the color is integrated into the steel.
Okay. Sorry, I was getting confused between the two walls. But yeah, just something, just anything.
Some of the, bring it up.
Yeah. Other than the landscaping. The landscaping looks nice, but I know that landscaping dies and it takes a long time to grow and...
It doesn't help. I mean, at the office area, there's going to, it's going to break it up there a little bit. Is there anything you want to think about?
He needs to come up to the podium if he needs to.
Well, yeah, we can, we can look at that or something that we can add, some type of more permit landscaping or something that can break that up. That's, that would be more permit. But yeah, I mean, with the landscaping up there and as you saw across the street with all the signage.
Yeah, I know, that, the Dog Kennel's not great.
We got the worst case of fencing. And so this will really do a lot to clean up that hole. We're kind of getting into an industrial area and so I, I do sit, but we also want some nice landscaping. Some of those, we have those big warehouses. These will be low. I mean, this is only one story, so we're not going very high, whereas when you get in some of those, just down the street with some of the bigger metal buildings, you know, you can do some landscaping, but it still doesn't hide that. But that's where we're going into this, is into industrial. And there's other commercial in that area.
Yeah.
We can certainly try to use some things to tweak, to tweak it up a little bit.
Yeah, understood. I'm just thinking about the residents that are right next door and trying to add more for them versus bringing the industrial closer.
Yeah. Yes.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Yeah, along the same lines, the landscaping that's shown here, is that inside or outside the, the wall? It's on the outside of the wall? That's what it looks like?
No. This landscaping along here?
Yeah.
Is inside the wall.
Inside, okay. Well, that brings me back to, to my earlier question. You have a 600-foot wall, approximately 600 feet. And let me ask you this question. When you're coming up, if you, when this project is complete, all complete, and let's say a year later, and you're driving up East Cottonwood Street this way, and you see this property, how do you think it's going to look?
You're not, if you're driving up this way along, you can't see this edge at all. There is, there's, there's manufactured homes all here. This slope is up, like I said, this is about six feet above our property. And then there's a six-foot high chain link fence with slats on it. And you can't even see this wall from Cottonwood Street. In fact, these people, when they look, I mean, they're on a deck, we were out, when I was walking this a few times, people were out on their decks and they were sitting there and they're actually, they'll see above our buildings. They'll see over our buildings. I mean, the, the difference in elevation there is quite a bit, so they're up there. I mean, so yeah, from the top of the fence, you could be 10, 12 feet up in the air to the, to the top of the fence here. And there's so much growth and so much landscaping over here on the Mobile Home Park. And they got a six-foot fence that goes all the way up to the, to the right-of-way line with slats that you can't even see in there. I think you had a photo, one of the photos. Look, right, go back to that one. That was real dark.
Yeah, I can't, I can't see anything.
But, yeah, look, this is real dark, but if you see, that's, that's one of the units there. That's a fence. So there's a fence, this is a couple of the units, so it's a fence. And then we're sloping down here. There's a slope down there, so. Let's see. Okay, these are dark. And then here, this is, this is the first manufactured unit here. And then there's a fence, there's a fence right here. It's kind of dark, but there's a fence right there. You can see all the mature trees that are there. So when you drive up, you, you have to get up to the property line, though, if that helps.
Anything else, sir?
No. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman.
It looks like a really nice facility that you've created here. I think my main concern when I first looked at it was the height of the fence, like it was talked about before. And then the chain link fence around the property. So it's more like the security issue. So as long as that's going to work, that was pretty much the only concern that I had. But it looks like you've done a really good job.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
No significant concerns for me. They already brought up the wall heights, so I don't need to do that a third time.
Concerning the wall height, would you consider a seven-foot fence along that eastern boundary?
We would have to, one of the, I guess I hadn't considered that. I hadn't any luck. Typical on the chain, chain link.
Yeah.
Six-foot height is typical. I don't know if they make seven or if it goes to...
No, I'm thinking of the block wall.
On the block wall, the, the block wall, I don't, that's easy to go up another foot. We just have to change a little bit of the engineering, I'm sure. But I, I mean, we're, on that side, I just, they would have to get to the chain link of the Mobile Home Park and, and come over and then go down a six-foot, you know, slope.
Then the moat, the moat with the alligators.
The moat with the alligators, we'll put the, remember those? So that's on the front. But I, you know, what, I, I'll ask Gail what his thoughts were. I'm, I'm not opposed.
One thing as far as raising the height...
Would you have your name, please, sir?
Gail Herrick.
Okay, thank you, sir. Speak in the microphone, too, please.
Raising, raising the, the height of the masonry fence does bring into an issue as far as wind shear. It would...
I would have to reengineer.
...involve additional engineering or has potential of it blowing over.
Yeah. Yeah, we understand that.
Security-wise, this will have a, an extensive security system. Even with the tenants, the, the customers, there's a kiosk that they would go to initially, closed gate, electronic gate. They, the kiosks is set up where they, they could sign up a contract, pay, do everything at that kiosk. And at that point in time, given a code to allow them to, to enter the facility. And I mean, it's, it's...
With regard to the, the security cameras there, how are those monitored? Because you only have somebody on site, right? You're not going to have anybody on site.
No.
So...
No, there's no, no permanent, I have a, there'll be the office there, but it's not permanent.
So these are just recording, security records?
Yeah.
So not real time? In other words, if somebody got in there, let's say somebody jumped that wall or got in the facility, would you be alerted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And motion, the, all of the lighting basically would be off at night unless it was motion detected.
Right.
If some, someone's moving around in there. And our fencing all the way around would be quite impervious to, to the point of keeping dogs out. I mean, an animal, a coyote, whatever, could, you know, get the lights on.
Right.
So, and then the, there's cameras to, you know, every building has several cameras, all of the alleyways and driveway, indoor gate, kiosks, everything is under camera.
But that's strictly for recording, right? It's not a live monitoring feed?
It's all recorded.
It's just a recording, though? Okay. Very fine. That was the only question I had. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good, good. Thank you. Anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Not seeing anybody. I'll close the floor. Mr. Dow, your...
I have a question for Director Ellis. Can we, are they allowed to come, are they allowed to just add to the fence by putting razor wire without going through approval? Or is that something that would have to come back to the commission for approval or at least planning?
Yeah, so the razor wire is something that gets approved by the planning commission. They're allowed so much above the overall height, it can't be more than two feet of that.
They can't just add it later without going, coming through?
If you guys put it as part of a stipulation tonight, that if, if they needed more security and you wanted to add it to a future possibility, that could be something that would be done so they wouldn't have to come back?
That would require a condition like this for that.
For the razor wire?
Yes.
Okay. But even if they wanted to increase the wall, they'd have to come back?
If they wanted to increase the wall height, you guys could approve that tonight as part of the approval process. There's no special requirements on that.
Yes, sir.
I'm good with leaving it at six foot, as long as there's a stipulation in there that if they were to have to add something, that it had to come back to us for approval. It wasn't just going to be some makeshift
Yes.
Situation.
Right. That's very good. Yes, ma'am.
I think I'm good with it.
Good with it?
Yeah.
All right. Commissioner Narwood.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep.
I'm good, too.
Vice Chairman, comments?
Generally, I'm fine with it. Just to jump into the wall fray, I think maybe if we were to consider, because I understand having to re-engineer that, if we were to consider allowing to put a one-foot topper with a couple strands of barbed wire that was not as extreme as razor wire or concertina wire, that might solve two problems at once, whereas you could probably place that on there without affecting the engineering of the wall. And you get your height and your imperviousness. And then it wouldn't require, you know, that wouldn't be as, probably not as expensive or extensive as redoing the wall and engineering. And then if you were to just add a couple strands of barbed wire around the top of it, that kind of covers all those bases as far as keeping somebody out and doing it in a way that doesn't require extensive changes to engineering. So that's just a possibility I thought I would toss out there. Aside from that, I'm just offering that as a possible solution that would cover everybody's bases. Aside from that, I don't really have any concerns.
That could be done later, though, too, right?
Certainly.
Because you're not going to have to re-engineer.
Sure.
Okay.
My only concern again with that is you have a residential area there. They probably don't want to look at that. And over time, razor wire, whatever you want to call it, starts to collect debris.
Domestic bags.
Just a thought.
Yeah, that's for sure. So maybe we want to put a stipulation in, Vice Chairman, that uh
Give them the option to add another foot to the wall in the future if they need it. Is that acceptable? So let's give them the option to put another foot on if safety requires it.
At their discretion.
Yeah, at their discretion.
Vice Chairman, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. Okay, so I would move to approve project number D, or design review project number DR 20001, Herrick Mini Storage, contingent upon the following stipulations: that the project is developed in conformance with the development plans as approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the February 24, 2020 meeting. The project conforms to code review board comments dated February 6, 2019. The project complies with all building engineering and fire department requirements. Number four, the main, I'm sorry, I left the numbers off. Maintain a 10-foot-wide landscape area along the entire eastern boundary of the subject site adjacent to the residential properties. The trash enclosure shall be screened with solid materials to comply with Section 404.S.1.A and B and the landscape buffering requirements of Section 407.D.8. Six, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued within 24 months of the planning commission action. And number seven, we should reserve the option to add, give the client the option to add one foot to the wall as needed at their discretion in the future.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dow seconds Vice Chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastin?
Aye.
Commissioner Narwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Dowling?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. University carried. Good luck, gentlemen. The next item up in this is a design review 20002, ME Beauty Salon, proposed beauty salon at 108 North Main Street. James, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. As you said, this is the ME Beauty Studio Design Review 20-002 would be located at the northwest corner of Main Street and Apache. The lot is approximately 0.25 acres in size, and the building would be 1,646 square feet. You can see the location identified. Here presently, it's a vacant site. The only activity that goes on is a bus stop that is in the right-of-way out adjacent to Main Street. Access to the site would be the main access from Apache on the south side of the property, which would be behind where the new Circle K facility would be. And then access on the north side to the alley that runs adjacent to the property. The parking for our beauty studio is, in our code, requires two spaces per chair or station. The floor plan that they've submitted would require six spaces. In their current design, they have 10 parking spaces provided in addition to three motorcycle spaces. As you can see, there's a vacant area sort of on the, would be on the northwest corner of the site that is going to be, remain undeveloped. Couple of parking spaces in there presently, and since they're overparked, that's where that would be. It does allow them opportunity in the future to come in with, either to expand this building or create another building. And they do have parking space available for future expansion. Currently, that's not what we're looking at, but it does give the option for the future. The design is sort of a Santa Fe style. What you would see from Main Street is this main front here. The top left rendering would be what you would see from Apache Street. The top right, where it says right side, is what you would see from the alley side of the property. And then the rear, adjacent to the parking area for potential future use. Couple of things I do want to point out on this. I'll get to a couple of pictures here. The adjacent property to the west is also Zone C1. Currently, there is a barber shop that operates there. And to the rear of that commercial property, there is some residential uses. So what the applicant is going to be doing along here would be a small landscape area. And then they've worked with this property owner to add the slats into the chain link, actually on the adjacent property. We have received a letter from that property owner, and he, you know, concurs with that being an adequate buffer. Technically, because it is a commercial C1 zone property, yes, it does have some residential use. So we've sort of tried to accommodate adding some additional screening to this property to accommodate the residential use, even though it's not a residential district. So this is the property to the south. This is soon to be demolished, and this is where the new Circle K building would be located. So you would be looking at the rear of the Circle K building in the future. This is across, property to the east, looking across Main Street. That's what we looked at, the property that would be to the west and the rear of that same property. And looking north on Main Street, south on Main Street, looking to the west of Apache Street. And these buildings along here are also soon to be demolished as part of the Circle K project. And then looking to the west of the alley. So that concludes what I have to say. I'm available for any questions. We also have the applicant here this evening.
I have none. No questions, Jim? You okay?
I'm not Jim.
All right. Commissioner Dow, any questions to Jim?
Oh, sorry.
The only question I have is, it shows chip seal on here, right, which is, is that one of our approved?
Yes, for parking areas that have 10, require 10 spaces or less, chip seal is a permitted material.
Is there going to be a barrier between the chip seal and that alleyway? Or is it just going to run from the chip seal into the alley?
Just go from the chip seal to the alley, is what is proposed.
And the chip seal will run all the way out to Apache?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
No questions.
No questions? Are there any questions to Jim before we talk to the applicant?
I do. Jim, could you go back over the chain link thing? The chain link fence? I missed who owns it and who's doing what?
Sure.
And why?
The current, this site that is proposed with the beauty studio is Zone C1. The property right there has a, is also Zone C1. It has a commercial use in the front and then residential use to the rear.
Right.
Even though it is a commercially zoned property. So the requirements that would be placed on this project, the beauty studio, would not require chain link screening, a wall, the slats.
Right.
Since it is the residential use, we've worked with the applicant, they've communicated with the adjacent owner and agreed to place the slats on the existing neighbor's chain link fence, which is more adjacent to the residential use of that commercial property. So that is something that goes above and beyond what the code requires, and they have, you know, will just be providing that to buffer this commercial activity from the residential use of the adjacent property.
Okay, so this applicant is going to put the slats on that, those
That's correct.
Person's fence?
Correct.
And did anybody want that? Nobody requested it? Or did they? I mean, I was just wondering why it's
We discussed with the applicant, and because it's a residential use, that's where that compromise came in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Vice Chairman, any questions to Jim? Vice Chairman, any questions to Jim?
Nope, none here.
No. So that area they're not developing in the rear is going to be all chip sealed?
Correct.
Whether it's a parking place or not?
Right.
Okay. That's the only question I had. The applicant here.
Yes, we've got, I think, a few people here this evening. Brent, who would, Brent, would you like to, or?
Sure.
This is Brent Moppen. He's the engineer for the project. And we also have Merlin Espinoza here, who is the applicant.
Yes, good. Your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, hi. Brent Moppen, engineer and architect.
Yes, okay. Any questions? Not any questions? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
No.
Questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Brent, did you do these drawings?
No.
They're great.
Lionel Cardenas, longtime resident of Cottonwood, drew these wonderful hand-drawn renderings.
That's great. I really like that. Is it going to look like that?
It's going to look like that.
That's terrific. Good job.
Yeah, he does a great job.
Super.
I coordinated, and it's a community effort. A lot of people in the community are involved in this project.
Wow, very nice.
Vice Chairman, any questions?
I would have to agree. I think these are really nice. I think it really improved that area.
Yeah, yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Totally. I'm happy with it. Looks good to me.
Okay.
Can we comment?
Please, huh?
Can we comment now?
Yeah, wait, in a minute. All right, all right. Very good. I think we're in pretty good shape there. Is anybody in the audience here other than the applicant want to speak to this item? Sir, you can be seated. That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the floor to the public. Commissioner Hart, your comments.
I really liked the design. I think you guys did a really nice job to it. I think it's a nice presentation to the city and to the street. I think your choice of the landscaping material is really good. I would encourage you to let that glossy Elena be natural, not to cover it and cut it into shapes. I think it'll give you a really nice look and background for your building. I think, I think it's really a nice job.
Commissioner Dow.
I like it. I think it's going to, it's going to help with the area. It's going to be pleasant on the eyes. I like the different, the different structure, you know, the Santa Fe style type thing rather than what we see with typical commercial buildings. I like that difference.
More positive comments. I really like your elevations facing the Main Streets. It's got a lot of depth and a good job.
Commissioner Narwood.
Yeah, it's going to really help Main Street, especially going toward Old Cottonwood. That area needs, needs some renovation and some help, and you're doing a great job. So good luck. Hope you get started soon.
Commissioner Sherman.
I agree with all of that. I just think it'll be a big improvement to that area.
Vice Chairman. I'm on board. Aye.
Yeah, well, I
Chairman Williams, may I make one comment on one of the stipulations that you're going to be getting to in a minute? So I wanted, I meant to explain that earlier. Number four in the stipulations talks about the trash enclosure and the water storage tank, and that it would require, you know, to be screened. The reason you typically don't see water storage tank in these stipulations.
That's good.
The location of this particular property is at the end of the line of the water line. We were trying to work with the development going on next door, but the locations were different. This applicant has worked with fire department, building department, city engineer, and they will be placing a water tank adjacent to the, where the trash bin is out here. And so that has been approved by the fire department for their water use.
That for fire protection, basically.
Correct. Correct. So the difference between the domestic use and the fire needs. So I just wanted to clarify why that is a little different than the standard stipulation and why that is in there before you
We appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that point up. Okay. Do I have a motion? Mr. Vice Chairman.
All right, I'll jump into the motion mode. I will make a motion that we approve project number DR 200, 20-002, ME Beauty Studio, contingent upon the following stipulations: that the project is, number one, that the project is in development in conformance with the development plans as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the February 24, 2020 meeting; that the project conforms to code review board comments dated June 19, 2018; that the project complies with, number three, the project complies with all building utilities, engineering, and fire department requirements; number four, the trash enclosure and water storage tank shall be screened with solid materials to comply with Sections 404.S.1.A and B and the landscape buffering requirements of Section 407.D.8; five, a three-foot screen wall is required adjacent to Main Street where the three parking spaces are facing the street; six, identify a minimum of two bicycle parking spaces on the plans submitted for building permits; seven, certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued within 24 months of the planning commission action; and eight, that's all. I don't believe there's any additional stipulations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dow seconds Vice Chairman's motion. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastin?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Dowling?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck. I think it's going to be a great infill, another good infill project. And it's, get Circle K up, get you guys going. Want it is? Sounds good. Okay. Mr. Director, discussion items, do you have anything for us tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any discussion items tonight for the commission.
Okay. Just working on some proposed projects and-
Yes, sir, still chugging along. We've got several projects in the works that you'll be seeing in the next couple of months and-
Tiny homes will be coming back for us, maybe?
Yes.
All right, very good. Any other commissioners have any, we can't get into too much detail, but-
Something flashed by earlier on the first applicant with the storage sheds. It showed a picture across the street. And almost looked like there was 100 yards of signs.
Yes.
Now, why, why is that still there?
That was approved previously.
Because it has the same thing.
I don't have a lot of details on that. All I can say is it was approved administratively in our department.
The first time I saw it, I called Al and said, "Al, what's going on?" And Al was like, "Yeah, it's been approved." I was like, "Okay."
It's not something typical, it's not something that we like to see, but it was approved through the application process.
Well, if there's a change in the property, or is that grandfathered? Or they would have to re-
If the use-
In other words, eventually that can be-
If the use changes, no, they would have to remove it.
Yeah, okay. Keep that in mind.
Any other commissioners have anything else to add to the discussion? Suggested topics for future meetings?
If there's anything the commission specifically wants to discuss or anything like that, we can put it on the next agenda.
All right.
Oh, the plants on, take a look at the vineyards on 89A. I think I brought this up once before. After the wall, they put up a wall, which is fine. And then there's phoetina that are planted heading more or less northwest. The last 50 or 60 feet of the phoetina are basically dead. So could we get them to replace those? Because there's a number of houses now, they're, they're coming almost all the way up to the highway. So I think we should get them to plant the five-foot ones, not the one that- When we approved that, it was for five feet, but they never did plant five footers. They planted ones that were like 18 inches, maybe two feet. So they should plant five footers. Okay?
We'll check into that.
Yeah.
Where is that again?
The vineyard subdivision, new subdivision on 89A, placeta Ranch Road, near Pine Shadows.
Okay.
Right there, it's the new subdivision going in there. Yeah, they, we had approved-
Better plan.
Planting rather than a solid wall along the highway. And I would agree that, yeah, just like anything else, needs to be maintained and grow. That's for-
Yeah.
All right.
Do we have any updates, sir, on Circle K?
They have the alley abandonment agreement going to council next week. And they should be demolishing those buildings anytime now and then receiving their building permits.
And anything on the, the apartments across from BBMC? I know that they were in motion with HUD, but we haven't heard anything.
They're still in limbo, they're still trying to get things worked out to move forward.
Mr. City Manager, maybe you can enlighten us on some of this?
Mr. Chair, we'll know by the end of this week. The escrow and all expires at the end of this month. So if they don't wrap up the financing and begin the process, the property will go back out for sale. I'm told not to worry, but something will happen there. But we'll know if that project is moving forward at the end of this month, the end of the week.
Thanks, sir.
Very good. Any other words of wisdom, Mr. City Manager? Glad we got you here.
Mr. Chair, thank you. No, I want to hit the demolition button though on Circle K, all that property. But it's supposed to be approved Tuesday, you know, Lord willing. And then we'll issue the permits. They're under the desk, waiting to be handed out once the contract is done. And I was, got an email today that they're actually ready to start demolition, so.
What, what property was that?
This is where the new Circle K is going to go, across from the old Circle K. I think there's three or four buildings.
Yeah.
They're finishing up the alleyway abandonment and some property easement stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Other than that, that's it, we're excited about the progress.
Good, very good. Without any other further ado? Anything to do?